Session according to the lawfully permitted to be discussed under provisions of the Freedom, Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Need a voice certification, please?
Yes.
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 All right. I need, um, a motion to amend our agenda this evening to add addendum to item D1, Personnel Report and postpone the consideration of item F2, the High School Program of Studies GPA calculation to the next school board meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? All right. Before we move on to our public comments, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have one individual signed up for public comments this evening, and that is Mary Payne. And Ms. Payne, before you speak, let me, I've got something I need to read, and then I'll invite you to the podium. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, use language which insults or demeans any person or which when directed at a public official or employee is not related to his or her official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, or affairs of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit his comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. Ms. Payne, would you like to come to the podium, please? And Ms. Sullivan, will you time for us? Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. And first, I would just want to say to all of you, thank you for the time that you give to the city of Lynchburg through the school board, and I appreciate all that time you give to this, and I understand exactly what you go through. Having been a member of the five-year plan during the late eighties and nineties, I know that it contacts your mind, and I thank you all for what you do. Today, I'm very much concerned because throughout the community, we as parents are concerned about the fact that we don't know the ratio of students being hired from Randolph College, Lynchburg College, Switchbri, and Liberty University. We don't know if you're traveling throughout the state of Virginia to other colleges, Virginia State, Virginia Tech, UVA, and other schools, to hire teachers. We are concerned that it's a possibility that the greater percentage of the teaching staff in Lynchburg is now coming from Liberty University. I don't know if this is the hiring season right now, but we are concerned about whether or not you're having dropped fares at the black colleges as well as white colleges. And we are terribly upset that than two years ago, it was 30 percent of teaching staff were hires from Liberty University. And today, I don't know what that percentage is, and it's very frightening to think that we are possibly having 40, 50 percent of our hires coming from Liberty University. And the reason we are so upset is because it is public knowledge. It's nothing the public is making up. It's no fairy tale. It is public knowledge that the president of Liberty University has declared that it's perfectly all right for any young person over that college who is 21 years of age to carry a concealed weapon, a weapon of total destruction. And we don't want our children going to a campus where young people who have not yet learned how to control themselves may be carrying hidden weapons. And then our children will get mixed up in something innocently and be killed or hurt or maimed forever. So I want to know just how much of a ratio is going on. We want to know what the concern of the school board is as far as the policy of concealed weapons or weapons on the school grounds, period. And we want to know and hope that all of you are in favor of our children being in an environment that is safe and that we would hope would not be of violence. And when a man declares that his school pupils can carry weapons, then we know that school has weapons. We don't have to guess it. If we go to Lynchburg College, we don't know they have weapons because nobody over there has sanctioned them having weapons. So to our knowledge, they don't have them. But this school has declared that it's perfectly all right. And the other thing is that those teachers, my three minutes is up, I shall come back and talk to you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you for sharing your comments with us. All right. That will take us to our next item, is C1, our School Board Appreciation Month. As everyone can see, I will turn that over to Dr. Brubaker.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. The month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month. The Virginia School Boards Association established this observance in 1989 to encourage public recognition of the roles and responsibilities of school board members and to highlight the importance of public education throughout the Commonwealth. This year's theme, Turning Vision into Results, reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders. The Lynchburg City Schools is joining with other school divisions throughout the state to recognize the important contributions school board members make to their communities. Members of the Lynchburg City School Board receive no financial compensation for their tireless efforts, and this school board is one of the very few boards statewide that has student representatives. The nine members of the school board are appointed by the Lynchburg City Council. Even though this special event shows an appreciation of school board members, members of the community recognize that their contributions reflect a year-round commitment. They are dedicated individuals who are committed to the continuing success of the city schools and students. And I hope you can see, we have a little bit from all of our schools tonight. People were bringing in boxes this afternoon. It looked like move-in day for a college. But I think it's just a statement from us to you all that we appreciate your roles. Again, you do this with no financial compensation, one of the only boards in Virginia that has that as the case. Some boards in Virginia are as high as $40,000 a year to be on the school board. And regardless of size, the issues, the complexity is still the same as we make decisions about students and their future. So thank you for what you do. I'm not going to go through each individual school. It's kind of like a scavenger hunt, really, on your desk. You can kind of go through and get to be surprised with all of the different things. I also want you to know, in addition to your non-edible gifts, there is a gift from EC Glass Culinary Arts for your dinner tonight. So I hope you'll take a chance to come over and sample that. So hopefully you will know from all of us how much we appreciate your role and what you do each and every day for our students and our staff and the school system.
Well, thank you. We do appreciate all the effort that all of our schools put into putting together these gifts for us. The students, I know, spend, you know, their time and efforts making us all these wonderful cards and posters, and we have this wonderful schoolhouse down here. And if you haven't had a chance to see, our photographs are on the side of that little schoolhouse down there. So we do appreciate all the efforts that go into acknowledging our efforts because we do work hard, and we appreciate being recognized for it. I also want to take the opportunity tonight to recognize our school board clerk. And while the official recognition for our school board clerks in Virginia is not for a couple of weeks, we wanted to go ahead and do that this evening as well. I do have a resolution that I will read, and I guess if it's a resolution, Ms. Sullivan, we need to vote on it, correct? All right. "The Lynchburg City School Board recognizes School Board Clerk Wendy L. Sullivan. Whereas school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and dispersments, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of the city as may be required by the school board, and whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks and the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, and whereas school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential, and whereas school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents, the VSBA Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February," we're a little early, "as School Board Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and whereas the Lynchburg City School Board joins the VSBA in recognizing the many and varied contributions of school board clerks. Now therefore be it resolved that at this meeting, on the second day of February the year 2016, the Lynchburg City School Board also recognizes this week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, signed by the chairman and the superintendent." Do I have a motion to accept the resolution? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Sullivan, we do have a certificate for you as well, if you want to come forward. And also, a little something else for appreciation of your time and efforts for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any comments?
I just want to say she is outstanding. I mean, and that's a very poor word to use to describe her effectiveness and efficiency.
Any other comment?
Appreciate your patience. Trying to look around, you know, other things. Thank you.
Yes, I could detail. Patience, thank you for being patient.
We will move on to our consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the Personnel Report and the Addendum. Is there a motion to approve the Personnel Report? All those in favor, please say aye. And Dr. Brubaker has an announcement tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. It's my pleasure this evening to announce Elizabeth Mason Cup is the new Athletic Director at EC Glass High School. She's been a successful social studies and AP teacher the last four years at Glass and has been a successful head cheer coach the last three years. Ms. Mason Cup has the passion and professionalism to maintain the high standard of success that the Glass Athletic Program has had for generations. We welcome her in this new role, and we're excited to have her in this new position as Class Athletic Director. And I know Dr. Richardson will be sharing out additional information with the faculty later this evening and tomorrow, and we welcome her in this new role.
Student representative comments this evening. We will start with Heritage High School, Ms. Rosser.
Last night, we had FAFSA night at Heritage High School, and we had 102 parents and students who participated. And that way, we can get a bunch of our seniors to go ahead and get in their financial aid so they can be on track for college. Seventy percent of the participants completed applications last night, so that was great compared to them doing it by themselves or having to figure it out by themselves. All right. Swimming has conference this, tonight actually, at six in Bedford. Boys basketball is also playing tonight in Amherst, and the swim team will be participating in regionals next Tuesday. And Thursday and Friday, the girls and basketball, um, boys basketball team will be playing against Glass at home. And our ace team tied for second at conference and finished third overall because they lost the tiebreaker, but we still placed third, so it's great. Curriculum nights coming up next Wednesday in the auditorium. This gives the teachers an opportunity to present what their courses will be like for the upcoming freshmen. Ragtime is playing currently. I already went to go see it this past Saturday. It's amazing. Honestly, every single last one of you guys have to go see Ragtime. I think I saw Ms. Poor there on Saturday. She already went, and you guys have to see it. There's teachers and student participation. Also, our principal is playing Booker T. Washington, so that's pretty awesome. The last three shows are this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at seven. Please, please, please come see Ragtime. It's really great. Also, this week is Spirit Week. We started off with America Monday, and today was Twin Day, and tomorrow's Blackout Day. And Thursday will be Squad Day. Sounds kind of weird, but my friends, we're going to be the, have you guys seen the Inside Out movie with the emotions? A group of my friends, we're all going to be as a squad, so hopefully that turns out like the actual movie. Hopefully it'll be really cute. And then on Friday is Orange and Blue. All right. The Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Breakfast. A group of Heritage students took the day off and went to the 18th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast. Both winners of the 2016 Oratorical Contest were Heritage juniors. Ethan Fredericks placed second among all participants, and Tenasia Garland took home first place. And Paris Lennon graduated from Heritage High School in 1995. He currently plays for the Denver Broncos as a linebacker, and he will be participating in the Super Bowl LV. Paris Lennon sent up footballs to Heritage to show appreciation on how the school has impacted his life.
Mr. Farm? What's going on, Aguilera?
All right, well, first of all, it's nice to be back here. Missed a bit.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you. Ms. Ligon was our Hilltop of the Week for last week where we weren't snowed into our houses. And she is a health and PE teacher, and I had her in my freshman year. She was my favorite teacher, which was saying a lot because a lot of my teachers were really, really good. And we're just really happy to have her, and hopefully she'll continue to do the good This week is National School Counseling Week, and it's, of course, a week to recognize what school counselors do, which, looking back at my high school career, is actually a lot because if it wasn't for my counselor, I would have missed a lot of due dates, applying for college, and getting all the financial forms in, and I couldn't have done it without EC Glass is hosting The Hollow, which is one of Agatha Christie's detective novels or well-play version. And during this specific show, you'll also, if you want to, you can come and eat dinner with it, which will be prepared by our Culinary Arts Program, and I understand it'll be very For the first time, Catherine McCord started a film club at EC Glass, and their first meeting was about two weeks ago, in which they were able to discuss different films and basically all the different genres that they liked. This is the second field trip that EC Glass students have made to the American Shakespeare Center. And this time, instead of comedy, they got to see the tragedy Julius Caesar, which is one of Shakespeare's more popu, which is one of Shakespeare's more better tragedies, but isn't as well-known as Romeo and Juliet or Macbeth. Last Saturday, at the VEX competition, four teams from Glass went and entered, and during it, their robots, it was a bit touch and go because some of them broke down and got fixed. But every team did well, but the team with Jake, Ryan, and Eric did the best with being matched up with a random partner from North Carolina, they were able to make it all the way to second place for the whole competition from teams from Virginia and all the surrounding Coach Salmon, who's been the cross-country coach for, I don't know, like eight or 10 years, was given All Area Award for his last year coaching, 2016, which is a great way to send him off. The news in advance named Libby Davidson, the area Girls Country Runner of the Year again. And also, Kami Karma and Brooke Mannion made the All Area Cross-Country Team, and their other teammate, Maddie Renison, at LU last week, was able to do very well in the 1,000 and was named Athlete of the Week. Wrestling, they had their last home match on the 27th, and in the first part, they beat VES, but despite doing very well, they weren't able to beat out Rustberg to get their last round win, but they did very well. And this is a video where some of our students are thanking you for all that you've done. I'll let them say it.
We just wanted to thank you so much for giving our school a better spot. We love our new leadership.
Thank you for improving the minority opportunities and wanting to be thinking for all you've done.
I watched a school board meeting on Tuesday because I had a pretty low virus in jail block.
We love hearing about what's going on behind the scenes. All of us at EC Glass appreciate your contribution, so I'm excited that you are constantly seeking ways to improve our organization.
Thank you for helping me by four years. You are the best for our idols. All this is for St. Louis and really stand in your way.
And, well, I'd like to reiterate their comments that thank you for everything that you've done this year and the three other years that I've been at Glass.
Thank you, Ms. Farm. All right. We will move on to unfinished business. Item F1, the Lynchburg City Schools Education Technology Plan 2015-2017 Addendum, and this does come to us for action this evening. This goes, do you want, just go?
Mr. Copeland had the topic. I don't believe we received any additional comments. Mr. Copeland, did we go around this? But...
No, we did not. So we'll answer any questions that may have come up between now and then. Mr. Childress gave a brief presentation on some components of the addendum that needs to go forward. That's about all the intro I got.
All right. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Then we will move on to the next item, postponing the program of studies GPA calculation. The next item will be Lynchburg City Schools' Summer School Programs, and this does come back to us for action this evening, and this goes to Dr. McLean.
Good evening. At our last meeting, we shared the current plans for summer school, locations, dates, those sorts of things, and we're bringing that back this evening, seeking approval and approval.
Any question? Was the board's pleasure? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? No one? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. All right. Under new business this evening, we have item G1, Promise Plan School Climate and Culture, and this does come to us for information only. Dr. McLean.
All right. As we continue to provide updates on components of the Promise Plan, since that was initially shared with the board in the fall, one of, we have two elements we're going to focus on this evening, and this first one is to share the results of surveys that were administered over the last couple of months. That is our annual culture and climate survey for students, parents, and staff. So I'll have Ethel Ree share that first.
Madam Chair. All school board members, good evening. Tonight, I will give you an overview of the division-level results for the Fall 2015 Administration of the School Climate and Culture Survey. I would like to first publicly thank all who completed the survey and provided feedback for us. A huge thank you also goes to Scott Kirkwood, who has worked with me each year to load the surveys and compile the data. This is the fourth year that we have asked for input regarding school culture and climate from our students, parents, and employees. Using feedback from each survey administration, the survey has changed each year, yet capturing some of the same questions as much as possible from year to year. As a reminder, our first survey was 44 questions, then 25 in the second year. There was only one survey for all stakeholders at that time. Last year, four surveys were used, and that was under some of the work that we were doing with the Office of Civil Rights. We created a survey for elementary and middle school students, a second survey for high school students, a third for parents and guardians, and then another for our employees. There were more than 80 questions on those surveys last year. We got a great deal of feedback, and so this year's survey was actually shortened to less than 35 questions. The survey was administered online from November 20th through December 11th. I mentioned it was a shorter survey. We did have some issues with completion that were reported. We received some phone calls, and we found that there were problems stemming from the use of new Google Forms that were not supported by our old browsers, or, you know, out in the community, different browsers that people were using in their homes and that kind of thing. While we were concerned about the impact that this would have on our numbers, we actually found that while last year we had a total of 3,821 respondents, this year we had 3,939. So that overall number did increase. I mentioned that there were four different surveys. We continued to require that students in grades five, seven, eight, and then 10 through 12 completed the survey in the schools. The survey categories remained the same in that we looked at academic expectations, safety and respect, communication, engagement, attitude and culture, leadership and decision-making. The category discipline, bullying, discrimination, and harassment, and then the ability to report bullying, discrimination, harassment, and assault were all assessed in the survey. I selected some of the information from the responses that I thought I would share with you. Looking at the elementary and middle school student responses, the questions that appear to be bold are questions that we noted from previous surveys or statements that we noted from previous surveys, and then you'll see the change in percentages of those who totally agree or strongly agreed or agreed with the statement. So in this particular survey, 97 percent of the elementary and middle school students responded that my parents care about my education. That was an increase of 3 percent. Again, that is the percentage of those who answered agree or strongly agree. You see 70 percent of students in my school feel like they belong here. That was an increase of 19 percent for elementary and middle. 72 percent, I say, indicated that I feel safe inside my school. 69 percent indicated that teachers treat students with respect at my school. That was an increase of 1 percent, who totally, I'm sorry, who agree or strongly agree. 61 percent, school staff communicates good news to his or her parents. That was an increase of 3 percent. And then we see that 33 percent of the elementary and middle school students... And then we see that 33% of the elementary and middle school students indicated that students treat teachers with respect at my school, which was a decrease of 5%. When we look at the high school student responses, 78% indicate my teachers encourage me to do my best on assigned work and test. 67% indicate teachers at my school have high expectations of all students. That was a gain of 5%. 51% indicate teachers treat students with respect at the school. That decreased 15%. And then 20% indicates students treat teachers with respect at the school. Again, a decrease there, 3%. 32% indicated that school staff communicates good news to his or her parents. And that was an increase of 5% of the high, with the high school respondents. 28% at the high school agreed that my, agreed or told, or strongly agreed that my school lessons and assignments are interesting, and that was a decrease in 2%. In parent responses, 98.6% of our respondents indicated that school is important to my child's success. 91%, my child respects his or her teachers. 84%, parents are encouraged to be involved in their child's education. And then 54% indicate that they agree or told, or strongly agree with school staff communicates good news to me about my child. When we look at the responses from employees, 90% indicate the principal encourages him or her to perform at the highest level of professional practice. 90%, parents are encouraged to be involved in his or her child's education. 80% indicates school staff communicates good news to parents about their child. And then 29%, parents are actively involved in his or her child's education. You may ask, Ethel, what do all of those numbers mean? What are you doing with those numbers? Just as a, as a, I guess, a point of discussion or clarification to give you an idea of what happens. This information is shared with the principal at each school. And they're encouraged to look at how they have done, looking at their percentages. How, what is going on in your school? Who's responding? When you look at this particular question that has been on all four of the surveys, school staff or the statement, "School staff communicates good news to me about my child." Of note, employees, 80% agree or strongly agree that yes, we do this. We communicate. When we looked at our high school numbers, our high school employees were about 20% lower. So 60% of those employees working in our high schools indicated that they agree that they communicate good news. If you notice, the elementary school students and the middle school students indicated, yeah, 61% of the time, I would have to agree with that. That was higher in the elementary schools, lower in all three of the middle schools. Parents, 54% indicate, yes, this is happening. But when we looked at our secondary school responses, they were lower. And then with the high school students, only 32% indicated that school staff communicates good news to them about their progress. The discussions that have to occur, that continue to occur, why do we see these differences, these disparities? If the school system, the employees are saying, yes, 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 as a majority, we are doing this, how is it that the parents and the students are feeling like, no, we're not being communicated, we're not receiving this communication? We don't have all of the answers today, but we're having the discussions. And this is just one example of a question and one example of the discussions that are occurring. How is it that we can continue to get better? Is it that our means of communication are not as effective as we had hoped? And then what can we do to get better? As we continue to look at next steps, I mentioned that the schools, the principals are reviewing their data. They're already begun to share that out with their faculty and staff members. We are incorporating results in the comprehensive plan. We are celebrating the positive aspects, those things that we're doing right. We will continue to provide professional development in any of our deficit areas. And then one of the things that I'd like to share is that we are and have been asked by the Department of Criminal Justice to look at another and to complete another School Culture and Climate Survey. And some of those questions, as we begin to analyze this data, are the same or similar to the ones that we're using. So we're looking at just how much information we have about school culture and climate and how it is that we can continue to use it to get better. Are there any questions?
Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Ethel. Final report. First, the period of time of November to December. It's when these surveys are administered. And apparently doing it online increased the participation, and that's good. I was just wondering, is there wisdom behind that time period for the surveys? I just wanted to know for myself as to the survey being done during that time period.
We wanted to do it a little earlier in the fall. This particular year, we were, we did do this and presented information to the Office of Civil Rights. We had not received any feedback. We were kind of waiting to see what would they give us back. And we were given some instruction to move forward with what we had, so that delayed just a little bit. But we're, we're wanting to give our students, our community members, our parents and our guardians, the opportunity to get into the schools and to really see what's going on so that they can give us a true assessment of, of how this, how, what the school climate is really like.
Okay, good. I'm glad to see in one of these that apparently the perceptions of safety tend to be increasing in one of these, I feel safe inside my school. At the elementary and middle school, that's, that's nice. Even though we have to continue to keep in mind that some of these percentages were already, in my mind, hugely low. But that's, that's good. What I'm, what I'm really interested in is at the high school level. Help me to appreciate why we see the fact that there's a 20, is a 20% of the students treat teachers with respect at the school, and then that's down. Are we saying that the students in the high school are not respecting the teachers at all? I want to make sure I understand that, I want to understand, understand that.
So the survey, those who responded indicated, and it was, do you agree with the statement or strongly agree is what you see that percentage indicating. And of the students who responded, 20% of them said students treat, and I would have to say only 20% responded, that students treat teachers with respect at the school.
So is that, because you, that's not my strong area. That means 80%? 80% of the respondents?
Right.
Say that they don't?
80% of the respondents did not agree with that statement. Right. And, yes.
Which may not mean they disagree.
Right.
It may mean they're neutral also.
Somebody help me with this. Is there a culture of disrespect amongst our students?
Some believe there are. The survey says that there is. That's why we have PBIS. We've been implementing it for three years to say we've got to create a culture of positive behavior intervention and supports in schools. There's too many kids that think there's disrespect. There's too many teachers that think there's disrespect. And it's one of the things we still have to work on as a school system. What I appreciate about Ms. Reeves, multiple things I appreciate about her, but we don't have all the answers today. I do believe PBIS, as we continue to implement it and find other ways to engage kids around teaching the right behavior instead of punishing wrong behavior. We can get to creating a culture of respect. People have felt disrespected. Some of our students have felt disrespected. Some of our faculty and teachers have felt disrespected. And this is one of the big grows still for our school system. We've got to get higher numbers on that. These numbers are not where they need to be at all. And, but, at the same time, you already know, this board knows, I'm not going to not show you survey results just because they're not what I'd like them to be or Ms. Reeves would like them to be, or Dr. Richardson and Mr. Beatty would like to have them be, or any of our other principals. But we've got to continue to have more dialogue. We have the Principal's Cabinet that we started three years ago, where the principals meet with groups of teachers. I see you're nodding your head. And finding out what can we do more to create that culture.
Ms. Simonton, and I appreciate that. And I'm finished. I just want to, because I always want to make sure that I'm fair. First of all, I'm so thankful that Ms. Mary Payne would come down and tell her, us about her concerns that I'm hearing for the first time. And it almost sounds as though that, and I can't be hearing this correctly, I don't think. It's almost like a Joe Clark kind of situation. That's not what I'm reading from this, that there's so much, that the students know that we're not respecting the teachers? I want to make sure I understand that. What are you saying? What, what is this telling me?
It could mean, and again, so as someone completing the survey, it could mean, let me answer your question. Yes, it's possible. We don't have enough information from this particular survey, and I'll share a little bit more information with you. But it could mean that I'm standing here and I'm seeing others who are not respecting teachers. That's what that could mean. And that I, I personally respect my teacher. That could be it. What I don't want to do is make assumptions. So many times, and we've rolled out professional development, and our professional development this year for our teachers and administrators and counselors has, has been around culture, and it has been around those things that we believe are necessary in order to change climate and culture, along with the instructional pieces. What I've been asked though is, so Ethel, what are you doing? I hear all of the information you're giving to teachers. I hear all of the information that you're giving to, to the internal group. But what is it that you're doing to reach students? And so we've begun having conversations with students, even around things like, you know, why are you attending summer school? You know, what is it that, that students are really up against? What is it they're facing? How are they really feeling? So that we can get to the heart of this matter. The other piece of that is how much, and you'll hear this in more of the next presentation, but how are we helping our students learn to respect others? How are we, because, and I don't think I put it here, but there is a question that states, you know, are, are the students respecting each other? And that percentage was somewhat low. So respect in itself is an issue that has to be addressed. Character education, PBIS, all of those things have to occur in order for us to get better. So, so it's looking at all of the stakeholders, involving the community, talking with parents, and really, and also looking at our own, as we call them, implicit biases. So what is the definition of respect? I know Ms. Brown and I have talked about it, Latonya Brown and I have talked about, what is the respect? What is disrespect? What is defiance? What are those things that really are causing our students to feel the way they feel and to act the way that they're acting?
Maybe it addresses relatability because, you know, all circumstances are different. And I'm finished with it, but, you know, I don't know. I, I have necessarily not encountered disrespect as a, as a classroom teacher. And when that happens, it should never happen. And I guess I'll have to explore this. This is, thank you for this. This is insightful for me. And these are students saying this about themselves.
Right. These are, this was from your elementary and middle with a 69%, and then you noted the high school. The other thing that I would ask you to note though is the parent response. The parents indicate my child respects, with the statement, my child respects his or her teachers. 91% say it's happening. So for me, that's an opportunity to talk with parents, share information about what this survey says about students, and have more dialogue about what this really means. Because if parents are truly sending their children to school and they're saying, yes, I, I know my child respects his or her teachers, and students are saying, oh, not so much, then there is a disparity there.
Do we have a teacher response for that question? Can we ask teachers, are students respecting? I don't see on here.
We said, and I apologize that I didn't put that on there. I can send that information to you.
That's an excellent question. And we have to tackle all of this. And I appreciate you bringing it to us because sometimes you see what the parents are thinking.
There's two comments I'd make. One, we tweak the survey each year. One year, obviously, we tweaked it because we were asked to by the US Department of Education. We made it too big, and we've learned from that. We need to take some of these questions and now start to drill down deeper. "Students treat teachers" isn't asking me, do I treat teachers with respect? We need to ask teachers, do teachers treat students? And start to maybe deepen this one. This is just a general students. It's not asking whether I, students treat teachers with respect at the school. So there's, you can answer in a general sense, ah, I do, but I don't think others do. Even if it's one other kid that doesn't. So I think we've got to do that. The other is, and I know we're doing our student forums again. One of the things, listening to just what you said. We've got to figure out a way to put our parents, some, some parents, some faculty, and some kids all together in a room and start to explore this as a group of educators and come out and see. Maybe it's by school. Maybe it's by, particularly in our high schools where these numbers are lower. And go, what's the disconnect from the parent's sense of respect, the teacher's sense of respect, and the kid's sense of respect? That may be one of the things we need to work to facilitate and see what comes out of this. The survey data itself isn't going to give us all the answers. We're going to have to peel the onion back with some additional questions and maybe do some additional work with kids, teachers, and parents in the room. We know from our discipline that respect is a word we had not defined clearly enough. Or disrespect was something we had not clearly defined to our teachers. And we're not defining it in the survey either. We're leaving it in the kid's mind or the teacher's mind what respect is or isn't. So that may be something we need to look at as well.
So I have one more. The, the elementary, middle school one, the students teaching teachers, treating teachers with respect, 33%. Can you break that down for us as to what the middle school response was as opposed to the elementary school response? Because I, there's such a drastic change in, you know, kids growing up and their attitudes and how they go from elementary to middle school. So I'm wondering if that percentage might be a little bit higher in elementary? And is that something we can catch a little bit sooner? You know, students are with one or two teachers all day as opposed to rotating through teachers. Can we catch those disrespectful? Yes. Do we have that though? Okay, excellent.
And as a reminder too, it's only fifth graders.
Yeah, just fifth graders, yeah. Dr. Nellis?
Can you explain a little more about what the request from the Department of Criminal Justice is? And is there, what's going on with that? It seems a little odd.
Actually, this would be the third year that we'll start. I believe it started actually February 1st. And it's a Secondary School Climate and Culture Survey. And Dr. Nellis, I could send you the actual.
Is that something they just, is this like a sampling thing they do? Or is this like a selected kind of, oh, we want a little more information about what's going on there?
No, it's a state survey. It's a state survey. And it's done, this year it's done at the high school. So the even years, they are doing it at the high school. And the odd years, it's the middle schools. And it's, again, a random sampling. It is of students. But many of the questions speak to the actual climate and culture, and more so safety.
One thing that you may not be aware of, within the DCJS structure sits the Center for School Safety. So this falls within that sub-relationship of the DCJS structure.
Also noted on that side was USDOE is now also interested in starting to do a School Climate Culture Survey for which then there's national norms to some of these questions so you can compare. So that may be something coming out before long as well. So one of the things we're looking at is, we've had our own survey. If there now start to be state and federal efforts to doing this, to what extent do we now just sort of blend in with those or use those? And then also then have comparisons in other areas and things like that. So we're keeping an eye to that.
So with the OCR, will we be required to do the same survey again next year?
The same meaning, same number of questions?
Same questions, right.
Yeah, I would say the number of questions, we, we still kind of negotiate through that piece. But some of the topics and the doing of a survey are a part of the agreement.
And then I guess I had made a note here to, to. And then I guess, I had made a note here to take a deeper dive into some of these areas with, and you kind of alluded to this, you know, talking to the students, actually maybe doing, you know, some interviews, and also with the teachers and the parents, if that, you know, opportunity presents itself. Is there a possibility to still do just like a follow-up, you know, very short answer, you know, short number of questions to follow up on some of these topics where there seems to be, you know, especially with the respect, area of respect, to maybe get a little more information before, you know, you wait until the next year? Or I don't even know if that's worth it. But, I mean, as you're working through some of these areas and trying to figure out exactly what's behind the answers to the questions, have you thought about doing some shorter surveys or, you know, setting up specific interview times or anything like that?
It's the interview times more so that I've thought more about than another survey, but I'm not opposed to doing another survey.
I don't know if that's, you know, worth it or not.
We've talked at time about a fall and a spring, and it's just trying to strike that balance of not overtaxing with surveys, but it's something.
I think one of the things we have to figure out is, in reading in some of the comments, people want to see progress. They don't want to just be surveyed again if they don't think they've seen something that's changed. So what are the things that we're gonna come out with as a result of the survey that we're gonna do differently? Part of it may be diving deeper to make sure we know exactly what the issue of respect is. In discipline, in discipline, we know the issue of disrespect was, we had not defined it. We had not defined it to our teachers. Our teachers weren't even consistent about what disrespect looked like in a classroom. So you may have a topic like respect, a question, everybody has their own definition of it and applies it as they answer the question. One thing I'm thinking about, again, listening back to board feedback, and I've thought about since seeing these results, we may need to be clearer to talk about breaking respect down into the pieces of what respect looks like, acts like. Do kids address teachers, yes sir, no ma'am, or Mrs. so-and-so? You know, is it about the language used? Is the language used directed at them or just language used that a teacher would hear? And that's disrespectful to use that language in a classroom. I think we've got to get clearer to what those things are that are seen as disrespect among kids, as to their teachers, among teachers, as to the kids, and among parents, among both teachers and kids. And the survey isn't gonna be enough to give the answers this board once. We're gonna have to figure out some other pieces to get the numbers higher. What's also clear is, is as the kids get older, this sense of keeping this caring community, this respectful community, it becomes more challenging to do. I will tell you, the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, which is now the Every Student Succeeds Act, is asking for all states to come up with other indicators besides academics and school climate is mentioned as one of the ones the states can choose. Several organizations nationally are already starting to lobby states to make school climate the other indicator. So, I mean, the good news is, if you want to say, we've been down this road already for the last three or four years, the grow for us is, we're still not where we need to be, and I think some of the gains that we can make as a system are gonna be figuring out exactly what we can do to get all of our kids and teachers and parents to feel like there's more respect going on inside and outside the classroom and in and outside our schools.
I'm finished. Thank you for this. Thank you all. So I'm at least gathering from this, I like how the survey categories were determined. It's really good. So, safety and respect. Respect impacts safety. Safety impacts respect. I see all of that, the bullying and so forth. So what we clearly need is, on the positive side, how do we promote respect? And what that means, so that students understand it and parents understand it. Because there are some ongoing challenges with a decaying society if we don't wrap ourselves around, whether it be through PBIS, which is more discipline-oriented, I think. But to get that together, because it can create a scenario where all of that other type of thing that Mary Payne was talking about could become a real issue. And we've gotta really get on that. When you see something dipping down to only 20 percent, and that's getting worse from the last time, there's an issue that has to really have some dedicated attention to that. And then the last thing, where it says, under employees, there's a perception amongst our employees, whoever they are that responded, that the parents are actively involved in their children's education, that there's this belief that more often than not, the parent is not involved. Is that an assumption? Is that accurate? We've seen parents thinking that their kids are respecting, their kids are thinking that they are not respecting each other under whatever determination. And if we're gonna get better with some of these things and really move the needle, I pledge my support, Ms. Reeves and others I know, to dealing with this, because this is a very nice survey, but I think it's very telling. It's, again, a commitment to transparency. And these seemingly would be things that we can get straight. We should be able to get this straight.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Reeves. All right, we'll move on to item G2, Promise Plan Gear Up Grant Update, and this does come for information only. Dr. McLean.
So continuing on with some of our Promise Plan updates, you did hear an update, I believe it was last June or so, about a grant we had received with Gear Up, and because it is also one of the strategies we have in place, and the Promise Plan wanted to provide you an update. So it's been a long time since you've sent this, Reeves. I will turn it back over to her for the update on Gear Up.
The Gear Up Grant Update, as a reminder, Gear Up stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. In the fall, we actually had a kickoff event held at Lynchburg College, and just to go back, this is a cohort of our current eighth grade students in all of our middle schools who are participating in this particular program. Professional development for teachers and counselors, addressing the unique needs of at-risk, as defined by Gear Up, at-risk students, academic and career plans, and raising educational aspirations is the goal. At Lincoln Middle School, Mrs. Claudio asked if she could do a book discussion with her faculty and staff, and so Gear Up funds paid for the closing, the Attitude Gap, How to Fire Up Your Students to Strive for Success. And that book is written by Principal Berudi Kofele, who also wrote the book, Principal 50, that we've used in our leadership trainings with our principals. And so she's had great results in working with her faculty and staff with regard to the attitude gap. Dr. Adolf Brown came in September and addressed all of our eighth grade, he actually did an assembly for all of our eighth grade students at Dunbar Middle School for Innovation. There was a workshop held for all middle school educators and all school counselors, with the focus being on graduation, making good choices, embracing positive relationships, and having that positive mindset. He talked with our educators about remaining in the balcony. We all know that it's really easy to get sucked into toxic or negative worlds, and so he encouraged us as educators to remain in the balcony and to continue to build students. We had Gear Up Week, where all three middle schools prepared their schools to embrace more of a college-going culture. So you, as you go through schools, you see the college pennants, hallway signs, they had daily facts and announcements, giveaways from colleges, military and technical schools, and assemblies that were done to encourage post-secondary education planning. CHEV, the State Council of Higher Education in Virginia, also had a poster contest that our students actually participated in promoting higher education through art. Our near-peer mentors were hired. These are those who actually go into our middle schools four hours a week. They go one hour a day to mentor our students. And this is a smaller group of eighth graders who were selected. They currently work with the selected group of students. Right now, they're going through, actually, our near-pairs went through after being hired a training with Larry Shaw from Shaw Inspires, and he talked with them about success and developing a growth mindset, which is much of the work that was done with Carol Dweck. Of course, he puts his own spin on that. But just making sure that we're being more encouraging and more positive-minded when it comes to working with students. The focus of the work is to serve as mentors to identify students who need additional support socially and/or academically in order to create long-term success. And if I could pause here, in the summer, our Gear Up students went to Virginia Tech for a Gear Up Leadership Academy. And while I did not attend, Serada Hester and some others in the division attended, and they came back with information, I believe I shared this earlier, that many students have heard so many negative things that they're holding on to. They're holding on to those things that they cannot be, and those things, because they heard them from people of influence, people who they were told to respect. And they, and it could be family, it could be educators, what have you, community members. But they just didn't have a winsome mindset. And so we thought it important to bring in someone to continue to work with them about instilling in them what it is and who it is that they can be. Counselors and teachers are working together to identify students based on grades and need for support. We do work with those students with C or lower in core classes, and those who, as the counselors and teachers identify, need some of the social supports. The Beacon of Hope sponsored an eighth grade college readiness symposium. The eighth graders spent the day at LU. Four sessions were presented by representatives from the colleges that you see listed there, Randolph College, Lynchburg College, UVA, Virginia Tech, CVCC, LU, McNeese State University in Kentucky. And what they did was they attended sessions on admissions, the NCAA, college options, college life. The Gear Up grant did pay for transportation, and lunch was provided by Liberty University. As we look ahead, or have already jumped into second semester, more professional development for teachers and counselors. The Beacon of Hope continues to help us and support us with college trips. Future Fridays, they work with our site coordinators to provide us with speakers from various professions and careers. And they are organizing our college knowledge nights so that families can come in and find out more and more about the college application process and starting that early. We will be having community forums with regard to financial aid. We'll have a representative from Virginia 5 to 9 come in and talk about the financial planning piece. And we will also have a program to transition our eighth graders into the ninth grade. The next slide just shows, that was the sea of blue on the right of students who were in attendance. Those are Gear Up t-shirts. We were able to purchase those with Gear Up funds because they serve as a safety piece. And when we go on field trips, we can identify our students. So our students had on those blue shirts as they listened to Dr. Brown at the assembly. And then you see an example of some of the college pennants that are hanging in our schools. In the next slide, you'll see the near-peer tutors on the left who were trained by Larry Shaw. These are those who go into the classrooms and who are working with our students, that selected group of students at the middle schools. On the right, you'll see a picture from the college symposium, and I believe that's Michelle Fletcher from CVCC talking to the students in attendance. Any questions?
I just had a thought. I'd be curious to know with this cohort, if they were asked the same questions, you know, in the survey and followed through until they graduate from high school, how their answers would compare to those students that did not have the opportunity to participate in this Gear Up? Because I think we're giving, because of this grant opportunity, so much attention to these students that I'm sure they feel like they're more engaged with their teachers and with their counselors and, you know, just, so I would be curious, and I know that's down the road a little bit to get those results, but there may be some lessons to learn in that, I don't know. Other comment? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. All right. Superintendent's comments, Dr. Boylan.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. I've got a couple of things to share with the board tonight. Well, you already heard about Glass and the Vex Robotics team coming in, was it second place? So congratulations to them. We continue to want to support STEM activities in both of our high schools. We're busy doing SOL testing, believe it or not. We're doing high school retests right now, and also our pedal kids, those that are working to accelerate through, are taking SOL tests. We're very excited that Darrington and Perrymont are working with their lead turnaround partner, AIR, and they are gonna visit a school that has had tremendous academic improvement in Spotsylvania County, spots with elementary, and we're sending teams from both schools up to visit that school on February 11th. Speaking of February, we're gonna have February intercession coming up in just a few more weeks, on the 17th, 18th, and 19th. So we want to remind the community, we've had letters go out. If you have not received a letter and have questions and think that maybe your child needs that help, you could always reach out to your principal. But we've looked at kids that we think could benefit from the intercessions and have reached out to parents and hope that we'll have a fantastic intercession here in February. It's National School Counseling Week. Ms. Reeves, can you come back up for just a second? Ms. Reeves has been working to make sure we're celebrating School Counselor Week, and I'm not wanting to say it yet, could you just show your, we have a little bling for our school counselors. The old term was guidance counselor, and the new professional term is school counselor, and making sure all of our school counselors got a copy, or got a, got a copy. Got a shirt. And we're asking the schools this week to do different things to celebrate the role of counselors in schools. They're a big part of facilitating, they're a big part, they can be a big part of facilitating the very issue we just discussed around this respect issue, because they get to hear from the teacher, they get to hear from the kid, they get to hear from the parent. So we've got to figure out how we can use our existing folks to leverage some of these conversations that we know we're getting based on the survey. I want to give a shout out, you know, I see people in the audience, Ben Copeland is over here, and I think I see Steve Gasky and Jason Ferguson. I want to give a shout out to these gentlemen and all the folks who work with them during inclement weather, not only on the decision-making process, which we continue to try to make in a timely way, but also about when everybody else is in snuggling and having their cup of hot Jav or cocoa, they're out going through neighborhoods, driving at three or four in the morning, going and cleaning the sidewalks all day when it's snowing all day on Friday and Saturday to get our schools ready. And I'm very proud of the work they've done. I'd like to give them a big round of applause. There are team members who come in on these days to get this work done, the custodians, grounds people, maintenance people. Bus drivers came in to run routes to see whether we could be ready. A few did, just to see whether we could really make it happen. It's a big, big piece. Speaking of that, I'd also like to say the collaboration with the city, which continues to be one of the things we want to do, continues even during snow and weather, inclement weather situations. We're continuing to work with the city to identify those key residential roads that need to be paved so that, or need to be cleaned, and get to dry pavement so that we can get back. And I want to thank Gaynel Hart and her leadership in Public Works for working so closely with Mr. Copeland and his staff to get us back in business as soon as possible. I think we heard today there was a division in a part of, another part of Virginia that just came back today for their first day of school, on a delay, I might add. So being able to get back is a big deal. I also want to share, I know Mr. Childress is here, one of the things we've been able to collaborate with the city in is we work with them around our capacity for the internet. With Mr. Childress' leadership, we've been able to work with the city and create a deal to double our internet, double our internet speed and capacity for the same cost that we currently have, which will mean faster, hopefully faster use. Hopefully, no one's internet has been slow, but as we're continuing to have more devices in schools and have people using technology in the classroom, we want to make sure it's delivered in a fast manner. You've already heard about Ragtime at Heritage, and that's wonderful, and you already heard, there's one more weekend for Ragtime, and the first weekend for Agatha Christie's The Hollow comes this weekend. So I hope folks all over the city will come and see that amazing work that we're doing. One of the things I was privileged to get to do was see our new police chief come and meet with the NAACP earlier this week. I think Chief Diaz did a great job talking about his vision for the police department, and he really reiterated his support to working collaboratively with the school system. We're already doing that under a new MOU. We're already talking about new ways we can approach discipline based on some of the things he did in his department in Fort Lauderdale with the school system about diverting kids. So we hope to have many more great things to talk about, but I think our partnership's off to a good start, and it was great to see him out and about in our community. I want to see if there's anything else to share. I don't think I have. I don't think I have anything else to share at this time. So, thank you very much.
Board comments? Ms. Snyder?
I want to thank all the students and teachers out there for the school board appreciation. I love it every year, it's so exciting. I always go through and pick out a couple of the favorite poems or things that the kids make us and take it to my kitchen cupboard, so I see them every day when I'm in there. And that we're always thinking about them and how we can work harder for them and what we can do. Had an opportunity last week along with Ms. Carter to go to a regional board meeting where we had representatives from Lynchburg City Schools and the surrounding counties and talking about how we can all work together to work harder for the students, planning to meet quarterly, maybe working together if there's ever big legislative issues. And one of the big takeaways I had Ms. Carter and I were talking about is they, some of those counties have their culinary students preparing their meals during school board meetings. And we said, oh, we should mention that. And then that happened today, so that was pretty neat. And then, yeah, go see Ragtime this weekend and then next weekend, go see Charlotte Webb at Dunbar. That's all I have.
Other board comments? Ms. Carter?
Also, I'd like to thank all the students that helped with the recognition for the school board month. And just seeing all the wonderful ideas, the creativity of some of the items is just amazing and the students' work. And the culinary students, that is a great idea, that we should look into that.
Anything else? Dr. Coleman?
I would get to the comments about all of the guests, I have my guests from last year that are so proudly displayed in different places. And I'm going to add all of this, it's just such a nice thing, and thank you all. Also, I would, Madam Chair, like to know, as it relates to when individuals come to share their public comments, can we just allow the public to know if they have something that is pertinent and/or relevant for us to, to share with them that only helps, I think? How do we respond to them? Or how does that process work when a person comes? I remember the last time we had someone who came to do a public comment around an issue, they didn't necessarily feel as though that their issue was being addressed, but it is. I'm just trying to, can we have a comment around that? And then I lastly want to just say that during Black History Month, which is February, I think it's important for people to know that February is the shortest month in the year, but that's not why Black History Month is in February. And a lot of times, because people are not aware, they will falsely make statements about what is happening. And Cottage G. Woodson selected this month that happened to be the shortest month for various reasons, of the number of people who were born in this month and so forth. And so again, this is a wonderful time for people to really figure out how we come together and talk intelligently around the contributions of all people.
I will address your question regarding the public comments timeframe and the speakers, and it is not our practice to respond directly to the public comments at that time. I do know that the administration does make an effort to respond to the individual and answer their questions. And I actually saw Ms. Jew walk out this evening to talk to Ms. Payne. So, did you want to say anything?
Just briefly on that, and one final comment, if I could have one wrap back. I did see Ms. Payne, I met with her when I first got here and encouraged her to come see me beyond the comments. And we do want people to come here, and sometimes they feel more comfortable first to come here and then, they can always come, my door is open. But sometimes we want people to also feel comfortable to come in front of this board as well and share comments. So sometimes it's what people uniquely want to do, but my door is always open and will continue to be open for hearing things. One thing I wanted to share, and I knew there were some smiles because I kept looking on here to see if there was something else, but I had an opportunity today to take Mr. Webb along with me to see Ms. Waller, her mother, passed away, Jetty Waller, at 98 years old. And we got a chance to attend the service today. And I just wanted to share, I don't know what Ms. Waller would say, but her mom had two sons, two daughters, four grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, and a ton of nieces and nephews. And Mr. Webb and I had the backseats in the church. It was packed with the message that she lived strong and loved well and was a role model. And I know that, I feel Ms. Waller's been a role model for so many people, but really she had a role model herself. And it just reminded me of the power and about really what we even talked about tonight. The strongest families create that connection and we've got to continue in the Lynchburg family to create a connection between our students, teachers, and parents that's stronger and stronger. We have strengths on it, we have areas we need to grow, but we need to do that. And that can be the real, the message out of the visit today. So we're, our thoughts and prayers are with Ms. Waller and her family at this time.
All right, anyone have any other comments? All right, our next meeting is scheduled for February the 16th at 5:30, and that is during the intercession week. So we hope to see everyone here at 5:30 on the 16th. And we have nothing else, we are adjourned.